School of the heart.
And we went out for about two, three hours and we used to go out the whole day. I mean, I can't do that anymore.
Bernice says Tara Thomas would have a tile for her floor, what would it be? Terracotta. You know, kind of dessert. You know, kind of dessert, you know, terramisu.
Let's start this meeting before it gets worse.
And you know what, the scariest thing is I can guarantee you, it will get worse. Once it gets on a roll, it's just wow.
It really dredges the bottom, right?
I never know whether they're ready to go in the back, I assume.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will call the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education meeting for August 12th to order. We will have a moment of silence. Thank you. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue Flynn will read the mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Sue. First item on the agenda is Board Celebration, Reconnect to Graduate. And Ellen Van De Lu is here along with Crystal, and they have some information to share with us this evening.
Thank you so much for allowing us to talk to you guys tonight. We are very excited to share with you our second, we hope to be annual, Reconnect to Graduate program. This is something that Ellen really had an interest in. She had seen it happen in Des Moines, and so it was something that she really worked hard to bring, sorry, to Waterloo. And so I will let her explain a little bit more, but this is truly a community-wide effort, not just a school district, it's a community-wide effort in order to make this successful. And last year, we had a really great experience. It involved a lot of different departments within the district, Student Services. We all worked together to make this work, and so we are very excited, I think, for this next year's, or this coming event.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our second annual Reconnect to Graduate will be Saturday, September 7th. Excuse me, and as Crystal mentioned, we did it last year, and we weren't really sure how it was going to go, but some of you sitting up there participated, and I think we were all pleasantly surprised at how well we were received in the community. We had over eighty volunteers that visited over two hundred homes, and we had thirty students that, at the time, indicated that they would like to come back to school. And some of them, you know, the thirty started back, and of course, some of them dropped again. But we did have others that stayed on and have earned credit, and we've had a couple that have graduated. So I think for those students, it definitely was worth the effort. But I think in another way, it was a wonderful way to bring our community together, and for everyone to say how important education is for our young people. And I think that the school staff and the community members enjoyed the feeling of really being able to do something, to just get out there and meet one-on-one with students. And there were some wonderful stories. I'll just share one that I remember really well of a young lady that our volunteers went to her home, and she wasn't awake, and someone roused her, and she came to the door, and they were talking to her about that, you know, they felt that she still had the opportunity to come back to school and get her diploma. And after a little bit, she looked at them and said, "Why are you here?" And one of our volunteers, a community volunteer, looked at her and said, "Because we care about you." And tears welled up in her eyes, just the fact that here were these strangers that came to her doorstep and said, "We care about you, and we think education is important, and we want you to come back to school." So we will be, as I said, going in on the September 7th, and we're going a little later this year, but we're going an hour later. Last year, we started at eight o'clock, got out about nine. This year, we're starting at nine o'clock and probably get out not nine-thirty, ten. But we have over eighty volunteers already signed up again, and many of the people that went last year indicated that they would go again this year. So that speaks well, too, for the program. Do you have any questions? I know a number of you participated, do you have any comments?
Well, I just want to say I was with Jane, and we went around, and we didn't have the fortunate event of getting a student to come to the door, but all the parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles, the one home, they just couldn't believe that we cared enough to come to their house and that we really cared about their student, that we wanted them to come back to school. And I was just amazed that, you know, the one grandparent would even, she said she would, what did she say she'd do, that she had her picture in the courier because she, it meant that much to her grandson that he went back to school. And she was in her PJs and everything, and...
In her what?
PJs, PJs. So a little later probably is better, but I just, I just thought it was such a good connection to have, that the people know that we cared about these kids enough that we were out there, and it was just an excellent event to just show the parents, the community, that we cared about these kids, that they're not just another number, and they're not just a statistic, but we want them in school. So I really had a great experience, so I want to be with Jane again, though.
Dr. Norris?
Well, my anecdote, since we're telling PJ story, my anecdote involves Mayor Clark and his wife Elaine, and the three of us were pounding on a door, and we were hearing dogs bark, but we weren't getting much satisfaction at the door. Finally, a parent showed up and talked to her for a while, and then maybe a brother or sister, but then the graduate, or the future graduate finally got out of bed and was standing, talking to the mayor and his wife in less than PJs. It was an inter, and I don't think he had any idea who any of the three of us were, so.
Well, and I heard that the mayor's wife did not bat an eye, and she just...
She didn't. Elaine went right on, that's exactly.
So I would invite all of you to join us and participate. It's a good time, and if you're unable to join us, at least join us in spirit, and we'll come back with a report about how things went. The actual event, excuse me, is Saturday, September 7th. And we're going to meet from nine until one. All activities will cease at one, so people can still have, yeah, and we're going to come here first at nine o'clock, and we'll have kind of review procedures and things, and then go out, and people will come back with their results. And for those that have not participated in the past, there will be three training times offered on Thursday, the 5th, here in this room as well. There's a seven-thirty to eight-thirty, noon to one, or four-thirty to five-thirty. But people that went last year, I think, have grasped the idea, and they don't need to get retrained. But we want to be sure that people that are new have the correct information, what we're all about.
And encourage people that haven't come, because you're assigned a team, and so it's not threatening. If you don't want to talk, you don't have to, and it's just very comfortable.
Good job, Ellen, thank you.
Well, it's not just me, it's a team.
Thanks for organizing.
Yep.
Thank you. Next item is Exhibit B on page two. And we will get the motion on the table and have Crystal to give us more information. The recommendation is that the Board of Directors accepts and acknowledges the donation in the amount of $7,625 from the Governor's STEM Scale-Up Programs for the Project Lead the Way Gateway to Technology at George Washington Carver Academy, and fifteen thousand from John Dear from the Implementation of Gateway to Technology to George Washington Carver Academy and Hoover Middle School. You get that motion on the table, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Crystal, do you want to?
All right. The Project Lead the Way program is something that we are really trying to work hard on getting going at the middle schools, and actually, you may remember this from some past board meetings, that Hoover is getting some remodeling done specifically for this programming. And the Governor's STEM Scale-Up Program, actually, we have applied for, had applied for a number of different programs. This one in particular, originally, we had not received. I believe, talking to Angela, it was turned down from another district, and so since the Scale-Up Program and the people on the committee from the Governor's STEM Program knows all the initiatives that we've been doing, they called her specifically and said, "Hey, could you use this Governor's Award?" And she said, "Absolutely." And so for the Governor's grant, that particular, that amount will go for mainly professional development, so that way, those teachers who will be teaching that program will be up to speed. They'll get the materials that they need to be able to really do the Project Lead the Way courses. And then alongside with that, wherever the Governor's Scale-Up Program is awarded, John Dear comes along and helps with other curriculum purchases. And so Angela, knowing that we were going ahead and doing this with Hoover, asked John Dear if they would also consider providing support for Hoover and for Carver, and they said, "Absolutely." And so we're very excited to be able to move those programs forward like we had hoped to.
So when will we get the funding?
The funding is actually coming in now. It will be in effect for the school year.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Any more questions? Well, Crystal, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you, Crystal. We now come to the time where those who want to speak to the Board may do so at this time, whether you want to discuss something on the agenda or non-agenda items. If we have anyone in the audience that wants to come forth, this is the time. C and O one, we will go to the consent agenda. Is there anything that any Board member want removed from the consent agenda?
Item F.
F?
My name's D and G, please.
D, you said?
Yeah, D, dog and golf.
And golf, huh, okay. Okay. We will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of Items D, F, and G.
So moved.
One of you second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Item D on page seven.
Move the Board of Education, approve pushing off Item F.
Can we get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Want to update?
Please, I see we've got like seven...
Hang on to your seats.
We've got like seventy new hires.
Actually, as of this afternoon, we have ninety-eight new teacher hires. We have, there are seven positions that are still out there. The principals have the candidates, but they have not recommended for those positions, so those will be an additional seven positions that will be filled. Your agenda reflects a few new positions. If you notice, they're all special ed positions. Couple of coaches, but majority special ed positions. We have hired thirty-six special ed teachers this summer.
So what brought, did, a lot of, how did this happen? One area was so...
Attrition, or just a normal attrition, maybe a little bit more than normal attrition, and then with some of the changes and opportunities to better meet the needs of our special needs students, it's, we would never have hired thirty-six teachers, special ed teachers in one summer. That's just, that has really impacted our overall numbers. As you recall, my projection was about sixty-five, so we're now, we're a little over there. And those, many of those positions are new positions, you can see that.
Of the new teachers that we're hiring, just regular ed teachers, they, how many years of experience average do they have?
I'm working on that, right now, as we look at the data, but I would guess over half of them are brand-new teachers.
That's great.
Yes.
Yeah, they're energetic, they have the energy.
Yes.
So how many retirees did we have?
I think forty-seven through the early retirement program, and then there are a few others that did not qualify for the early retirement program, but did go ahead and retire. So probably a total of fifty.
So we've got a net add of over fifty?
No, fifty others just left. They transferred to other positions outside of the district, moved. That would be the attrition, so roughly a hundred.
So our net change is about...
Not counting special ed. If we took special ed out, there would probably be a few less than a dozen positions that we would be down.
Down?
Yes.
But with special ed, we're even?
We're, no, we're a little up.
Are we identifying more children, or are we just getting more children into the district for special ed?
I would assume some of both. Dr. Barney, can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, I would, it's a, I think a part of the programming adjustments that we've continued to make over the last few years, of continuing to get access to more students and to providing the services that we need to. And in addition, as we begin to evaluate the quality of the services we're offering, we're going to see some changeover in staff as we try to get the best folks in front of the classroom with students.
Yeah, thank you.
So our student-teacher ratio is changing for special needs, is that a fair assumption?
I don't have the data to specifically say exactly what that number would be.
If you just, Lyle, if you were just talking about averages, if you took the FTE of students that had IEPs, right, and the FTE of the teaching population, you could, you could make that assumption, but that may or may, I'm not a hundred percent positive, as Dr. Barney said, whether Larry Martin changed the caseloads, or whether there's more kids needing intensive one-on-one assistance like that. So we'd be happy to drill down further and get you some more specific information.
One, one impact would be the early childhood special ed programming that we brought in-house. That would accommodate for quite a few of those people.
And maybe do they change the guidelines for special ed? Have they changed?
Not to my knowledge, but...
Okay, so it's the same.
And Bev, I just wondered for the new positions, if you would explain what a literacy interventionist is and the ESC hospital program.
Jane, would you like to do that?
Yeah, the literacy intervention specialist, I believe that's probably Irving is listed on there, is that right? Yeah. That is actually a position that is added as part of the PLA grant, and it's funded by PLA dollars. It would, would only be there for the duration. At this point, you know, we'll evaluate it as we go through. That person will work with students who are needing extra supports and just intervene right at the very beginning when we know when, when they... Those are really loud today, doesn't it seem like it's really magnified? Just intervene right away.
And what's our process for adjusting? What's our process for adjusting as, as we do first day and so forth? I'm assuming this year with, are we going to have fewer VTs? So it should be...
A little bit more stable.
A little more stable than previous years.
And because that, there is a requirement that all of the pre-registered kids be in the system this week, we'll be able to look at staffing and be pretty confident that those numbers are real because they will have been registered and in the system this week. So we'll be having, in fact, we had a conversation today about one of our schools that's already in session, and so, yeah, we'll, it'll be a little easier this year, Lyle.
I guess that would just underscore my personal bias that if we do make changes, they need to be made within the first few days. You don't have classes that go a week or ten days as a unit and then get split up or divided, so.
I think what we can commit to, let's sit right back here, is that we will monitor it closely from the very, very beginning, day one. I would let you know, too, that a lot of students, there are changes even ten days, fifteen days into the program, and so we, your point is well-taken. There will still probably be some changes even late in the game, possibly. We would try to alleviate that as much as possible, but it does happen because the numbers change continually for that first three weeks, so.
We had very little movement at the beginning of the school year, past, this past year, and we met as a cabinet, daily, to look at numbers.
Every day at four o'clock.
We would tend to err on a side of fiscal conservative, fiscal management because we're trying to watch our unspent fund balance as it has gone down a little bit, and so the tendency would be to try to get by with the allocations that we had, but then be very aware that we might have to make changes.
And am I correct in assuming our first-day enrollment as a percentage of final enrollment is continually increasing each year?
The first day. The first day is a fairly decent predictor. Cora is able to take a look at first-day enrollment for each of the last five to six years and make a prediction. We can do that. I'm not a hundred percent sure that, Cora, you want to come up and address that? I'm not a hundred percent sure that I remember that the, that the percentage has gone up, but we're working to that end.
Good evening. I would say over the last three to four years, the first-day enrollment has increased.
Percent of total?
Percent of total, and based on our projections this year, I am expecting to see an increase, yes.
Okay, so again, first day is more indicative than in the past for a number of reasons.
For an increase.
Being more stable, more students show up first day, as, fewer students show up after the first day than a previous...
I'm expecting more students to show up the first day, yes.
Yeah, okay. Those are all helpful in early planning, okay, thank you.
And helps if students register their, or parents register their students.
Really helps.
No, that really helps, and if, and if they're getting better at that.
As long as we're sending the message out and sending students to school the first day.
Yes. And I think our registration for the last week was very successful. We even had a good discussion today with our buildings inquiring about students who did not register, so we're going to try and put phone calls out in our buildings, still seeking registrations of those students that didn't show up. So that's an extra measure we're taking this year.
Okay, very good.
So how do we account like for students who move out of the district? And we, we don't know that they are leaving.
We, we don't know until we see that they didn't register, and once again, we can put a call out, you know, just to see if we can establish that they are not here and don't show up.
Well, you're losing two fantastic students. My, my two great nieces are really...
Call them back, Bernice, and we won't lose them.
Their dad was transferred, so.
But you're here, so we can keep them here if you call.
I know, but they're leaving.
But, Lyle, Mrs. Turner's new metrics are based on her ability to project enrollments.
Maybe they can come live with you, Bernice.
Anything else, Port?
Okay, we're ready to vote.
I thought we were trying to...
That's right.
I think it's the teachers who support kids who have been hospitalized.
So like they go out, see the needs, and you think you go back an hour a day or two hours?
I'm not sure what the timing is. I know, I know who those teachers are, and I know they have supported kids who have been hospitalized.
Or homebound, or...
Long-term hospitalized.
And they're located here at the ESC?
No. No, they're located either in their home or in a hospital where they, if they have special needs that we would...
No, no, the coordinator, though, it says ESC.
Oh, they're assigned, that's their home, their home assignment. Any district-wide programs, their home assignment is ESC.
They don't officially have an office here.
There you go, yeah, gotcha.
Thank you. Sorry.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposes? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Exhibit F on page twenty-six. Recommendation is the Board of Education approved travel to Orlando, Florida, the week of March 16th through March 22nd, 2014, for the West High instrumental students. You get the motion on?
So moved.
Okay, discussion.
Okay, Mr. Kleinheinse, I promised I wouldn't make you talk, but we'll, I have to say as a proud band mom, that this trip has been in the works for a long time, and you deserve a lot of credit, and I would just like you to have a moment to talk about the trip because I think it's a great opportunity for these kids.
You're under pressure.
She's been to my band concerts and know how well I do speaking publicly, so.
That's why we have you here for practice.
This trip is an opportunity for the band to experience the Disney Youth Performing Arts Program, which allows us, one of the activities that we're doing, just to explain to you, which I think is pretty neat, is they'll get to work with some of the studio musicians that Disney hires, which are, which are some of the top musicians in the world, and they'll actually get to record a track to a Disney movie as it's playing in the background, and then as I'm, so I'm told, we'll actually get evidence of that happening. We'll get the, we'll get the scene with us playing behind it. We'll also have an opportunity to play in, on the downtown riverfront. I'm not sure what theme park that's in, but I know we're playing there. And give us an experience to showcase band in Iowa, and more specifically, in the Waterloo Community School system, all the work that, that the middle school directors and formerly the elementary school band directors had done to get them to that point where we can excel and kind of show it off to people that probably wouldn't travel to Waterloo, Iowa, to see us otherwise. And obviously, there'll be the fun part that the kids will get to do, and which I think is also very neat because it's showing kind of the unique opportunities that, that we as a school district and as a band program can provide for our students.
How many students do you have this year, man?
We keep fluctuating, but we're right around one hundred and fifty this year. So we've been above it, we've been below it. I think right now, we're one or two students below one fifty. So it's very exciting because the numbers are projected to grow again. Next year, we'll be at at least one hundred and eighty and could possibly, in the next two years, break two hundred. Yeah, there's not going to be enough room on the March Man Field.
Clinton used to have three hundred.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it.
There's another metric.
It was 99 a few years ago, Lyle, so we've increased quite a bit.
No, I know, I know, it's been growing.
And East High's got growth in their program.
Big growth.
Yeah, East High's going to be at 80 this year, which is double, so it's very, very good.
But in terms of competition, a lot of those larger bands do not march freshmen, do they?
It really depends on the school district. Where I marched, we did not march as freshman, I marched in Cedar Rapids-Jefferson. We didn't march freshmen then, but you know, as the numbers fluctuate, different bands do different things. I mean, they were a band that used to be 300, they're about our size now. It really depends, it really depends. And that's, I mean, that's something we're going to start looking at because 180 is a lot of kids. I mean, we're planning for next year already, trying to fit all those kids into the space and looking at what we can do to, you know, provide the positive opportunities that we can.
And on another front, I didn't know Mr. Kleinheinz would be here tonight, but I just wanted to... Tara reminds me the Someone You Can Know segment on Channel 7. I just think that, excuse me, the band led by Mr. Kleinheinz, I call you Kleinhouse, my kids laugh at me.
You wouldn't be the first one.
But anyway, they, the band, again, this August had a death of a father in the band. And under the lead of Mr. Kleinheinz, they had canceled the band practice that they have Wednesday morning encouraging the kids to go. And it's a quiet girl that is her dad and he was involved in lots of the band stuff. And I just, the character that that's building in these kids and the small community in a big high school, you don't get lost because these kids care about each other. And I just think it's awesome, so thank you very much.
Do not memorize "It's a Small World," that tune will drive you crazy.
No, absolutely not.
Please don't.
And when we're down in Orlando, I'm not going on that ride.
Okay, do not do "It's a Small World."
Just thanks for everything you do.
Oh, well, thank you for giving me the opportunity, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Exhibit G on page 35.
I move the Board of Education approve the recommendation of structure architects and award the bid to Peters Construction of Waterloo for a base bid of 2,000, excuse me, $228,000, $228 for the East High School Elevator Project as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
In here, the 228 from Peters says the apparent low. I assume that was by structure? Okay, so as we look at it then, I mean, there's significant difference, $20,000, but the other bid is two months earlier. And I'm just wondering, you know, in terms of disruption. What?
2014.
No, Prairie, Prairie's November 1st. Yeah, so I don't know, you know, I'm just, have we looked at that in terms of noise and disruption and all the rest of that? I mean, no? All right, well. I don't know how much.
I thought Dan talked at our last facilities meeting though about them getting this done and, I mean, that they're going to try and do some of the noisier stuff after hours. And some of the work has already started, so this is more of a...
Okay.
He didn't, yes, because we talked about the fact that it would be during school and he didn't seem to think it would be overly disruptive.
Okay. Agree, that's what he said. Word for word what he said.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposes? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Exhibit I on page 41, the start date waiver request resolution. And the motion is that the Board of Education adopt the start date waiver request resolution. Can we get that motion on the table, please?
Second.
And Dr. Norris will read us up to date.
This was a formality in the past. School superintendents have generally sent a letter or an email to the department saying, here's our start date. We'd ask you to grant us a waiver. When it became a lot more open with the Fair Board and the tourism industry requesting a later start and the governor getting active involved about it, IASB recommended, even before this latest round of the Board of Education, the State Board of Education voting on and turning down a rule, before that, this was actually recommended that each board across the state involve themselves. You've already approved the calendar, but involve themselves in the resolution. And so I put the things we've been going through there and actually kind of proud that we started a week later this year. I think it shows that we have been receptive. We had Aaron Buzza on our calendar committee as well as folks from the... Oh, I'm blanking on the name of the department. Leisure Services, thank you, Ben. And I think it's just important that we take a little credit for moving school back a week, which then has ramifications, as some of you know, at the other end of the spectrum. But I would urge you to pass this resolution, we'll send it in. But I don't think, the word is out that we haven't heard the last of...
Well, I don't, I don't think the state Fair Board should be dictating what time school starts, but we do have to respect...
Absolutely.
The Marloco.
You know, when people ask, I say regardless of the start date or the end date, it's 180 days.
Right.
Whatever you want to start later, you're going to go later, you know?
Right.
So it's kind of six and one half dozen of them.
But does the hour thing pass, doesn't it?
Yes, it did. So we'll have some flexibility. Yep, it does start.
So we, in theory, could go to longer days and fewer days.
Theory.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't have to wait for the legislature to approve the hour thing?
Correct.
Okay.
It's done.
And our calendar looked into the crystal ball and we were able to start a little later this year because we're not going to have any snow days, so. So we're fine, okay? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
I'll call you to check roads some morning.
I can say all these things now. Okay, I'll invite you guys over.
Shanley has muffins on or something early in the morning.
That's right, with the snow. Exhibit J on page 43. We have two of these resource officers agreement. The first one is for the city of Evansdale. And the recommendation is the Board of Education approve the school resource officers agreement for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved.
You got a second? Discussion. This is kind of routine, right, Cora?
Yes, it is routine. Our safety officers, our SROs for Bungar and also for our additional from city of Waterloo, are routine. We bring them before the board each year. There are a total of seven officers within our district and we need them for their safety of our buildings. And I encourage the board to approve them. They've been within our district for some time and work with our district very well.
And Cora, I just want to say that the officers that I know and interact with at football games and the services they provide are awesome and the connection they have with our students is invaluable, I think. And so I just think this is an amazing thing that we do and I think it's really quite necessary, so.
I totally agree. They've been very supportive of the program that they offer and they work very well with my office, so I agree. And with the district.
Do they get an increase in pay each year? Is that based on what, the school's bargain and the city bargains or?
It's based on what the city bargains, it's in cooperation with the Waterloo Police Department. Andrea and I participated in the Run, Hide and Fight program.
Yes, we did.
And we did it last Thursday and it was...
It was awesome.
It was quite...
Cora had her tennis shoes on.
I did, I had to go...
I didn't.
It was quite an experience for us and it was really rewarding. So I encourage each of you as board members to please participate.
Right, and the SRO officer saved our lives in one of the incidents.
Yes, he did. It was good.
So are they offering that again?
Yes, they are, I think it's being offered. Tomorrow noon?
At West High, or Hoover or West High?
Hoover. Hoover. And it really gets your heart beating because you really feel somebody is after you.
Yes, it was quite an experience.
Yeah, they go through five different scenarios. So, and you can participate in all of them or you can sit down and rest.
And then we've got some special, little bit less lengthy training for staff.
Thank you.
Now, look for the exits, that's what you want to look for, right, Cora?
Or a place to hide. I suggest not try and fight. But we did have someone participate in wanting to fight also. It was quite interesting.
And they told us, don't hurt the officer or don't hurt the perpetrator, because, yeah.
The word on the street was that one of our assistant principals, and I'm not going to mention Kerry Whelan's name, was able to take down one of the shooters, so. Steve, was it Steve? He claims it was Kerry, I'm just telling you.
And in our event, the secretary, I won't mention her name, Holly, tried to take the same person down and she ended up getting some battle wounds, so.
But she slowed him down.
She slowed him down and saved some lives.
So now we're talking, tell us the basis of the training.
The basis of the training, there were, in one of the last events, I'll tell you, there was actually two shooters that entered. We were in a cafeteria scene as students and they entered the cafeteria with their weapons loaded. And our, we were able to leave the scene and we were to escape and we had to find exits and leave the lunchroom and prepare to be safe. And it was quite interesting. I won't mention Travis's name, but he wiped out on the floor. And we all had to go to safety and it was quite, quite interesting. But in the end, the officers were, they kind of wanted to make sure that they were able to shoot me, but they couldn't catch me. So it was interesting.
See, they told us that...
And we're having fun with it now, but it is very, very serious training. Andrew, by the way, what are you doing at noon tomorrow?
That was interesting.
We could have a great deal of fun.
And when they shoot at you, it's sort of plastic little bullets.
Yes.
Yeah. And the noise is very loud.
And they give you headgear, right?
Yeah, we had on headgear, prepared in sweatshirts in case some of the color splattered on you. But it really made you feel like you were in a scene and you really thought about what was happening for your life.
And for us, it was, we didn't have students with us. So that's a totally different thing when you have 30 students under your care.
So it'll take a little bit of time and training to move from the culture of just lockdown, just hiding, just doing everything passively to more of a think on your feet, more aggressive, more get out if you can. So, but we're in the process of that. Cedar Falls is going through it. Dr. Barney's been through the longer training, is going to be helping us and...
And the staff training will be the same?
Yes.
So all of our staff will?
Right, they won't go through quite as lengthy of scenarios and most of theirs might be on video and things like that, but they will be trained in what their options are.
And it was very exciting to see our officers actually prepare and enter into the scenes and actually use their weapons and secure and protect those individuals in that type of a situation.
It was good training for them, yeah.
Were these our officers?
It was actually our police, yes, it was. And it was, they were actually timed within seconds to see how they respond and actually go through the drill. And after each scenario, they were actually debriefed by their own staff and told the timeframe of, you know, getting through the scenes, so. But yes, we need our officers in the schools, so please approve the request.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Chair votes aye, motion carried. And the second agreement is with the city of Waterloo and the recommendation is the Board of Education approve the school resource officers agreement for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved.
Can we get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, and it's the same process for Waterloo. And do we need any further discussion?
How many hours does this involve? Six, six officers, about? Yeah.
They spend their full day with us.
That's their job.
For nine, for 180 days.
Yes, for our total school year.
Okay.
All righty, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Exhibit L on page 56. This is information only, this is the first reading of these two policies. Number 504.21, academic honesty and 901.1, tobacco nicotine products free environment. Did anyone have any questions on either of these policies? The first one is a brand new one, right, academic honesty?
Welcome to our new Director of School and Community Relations, Tara Thomas.
Good evening, happy to be here. The academic honesty policy is being put in place to fall in line with the IB International Backglowiate requirements. But we have broadened it to obviously include all students in the district because we want everybody to follow similar guidelines.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions?
So there's more details in a...
In the rule.
In a reg that's coming or?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Cora, do you have a comment on that too?
We actually included it in our student conduct reg instead of adding an additional reg. We just included it to broaden our student conduct policy and included it right in there to include it for all students.
So there's a little more guidance there in terms of, it's just dependent on the offense, well, that's pretty broad. The disciplinary action, which are dependent on the offense. So is there guidelines for some sort of standardization?
There's a broad latitude allowed to the administrators of the building where it happens, but there are more specifics than you're seeing now in the policy, yes.
Okay.
And Cora, will any of this be, you know, the student code of conduct that our students sign? Will there be another bullet that includes academic dishonesty?
You can't say bullet, Shanley, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you, happy to be here. And so I know I have some context to get that Someone You Should Know on the air. I think I can make that happen for you.
All right. And exhibit M on page 61. And we'll get the motion on the table and afterward, Mr. Coughlin will give us some background. The recommendation is the Board of Education approve the agreement with Farmers State Bank for a line of credit to utilize from August 14th, 2013 to November 1st, 2013, with interest charged on the actual funds committed to the district.
So moved.
And Michael, will you explain why we are doing this?
We have done this a couple of times in the last couple of years in the situation that we get in, that state aid and property tax don't come in until September and October. And we're trying to get through... And we're trying to get through the summer salaries and a lot of ordering of supplies and so on. So, a lot of cash flow is needed. Also, even though state aid is promised on the fifteenth, we don't normally get it till about the twentieth, and our payroll is on the fifteenth. So, they release it on the fifteenth. It doesn't get through the banking system for three or four or five days, depending on the time of the weekend. So, I told you I would get you some more information as far as interest rates. That's two point seven five percent. And it is on only the amount of money that we actually borrow. We have a limit this time up close to ten million. There's a couple of times that that will spike just because of basically that payroll issue between the fifteenth and when we receive state aid. So.
That's a good rate for a show term loan.
It's interesting how the banking works the other way. When I make a debit purchase and look online when I get home, it's taking about thirty seconds to hit my, to hit my.
The houses take a little water, clear.
Not putting in, so it's.
So, Michael, you said it's up to ten million?
Yes.
Okay.
What are you anticipating we might need?
At the highest point for about four days, it'll be nine and a half. But, and that's based on not getting any revenue in. This time of year, also getting the catch-up payments from the state as far as Title I, and some of the grants sort of finished out and getting the reports in. It just depends on when the state puts out some of the money that they will owe us. So, it's really an unknown of how close we will get to that. Hopefully, it'll be a million or two, less than that at the worst. So, this is a conservative cover.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Superintendent's report.
Just two or three items, quick items tonight. Crystal and Katrina led a Realtor tour the other day. We visited Orange and Hoover Band and Hoover STEM Rooms and showing some of our Realtors, some of the great things going on in the Waterloo community schools. They did a great job. We gave the Realtors copies of the district DVD, should say, yeah, DVD that's being produced, that's also on our website about, that some of you've seen, about the great things going on. At a UEN meeting last week, and a SAI meeting in Des Moines, quite a bit of conversation was about how the districts around the state would implement the new teacher leadership and compensation reform. Went over a lot of details of that. Won't bore you tonight with all the details, but we are forming a committee. Jane and Bev are chairing that, co-chairing that committee. And as we begin to process through with our committee, that'll involve teachers and administrators. And Jane, who else are we inviting? I think we are gonna put on some PSYAC members.
Uh, yeah. The, there's regular teachers. Let me think of it. Oh, gosh.
Sorry.
I've got so many committees going on in my mind. I'm trying to think of the membership.
Teacher leaders, someone that has.
That's right.
Served as a teacher leader.
That's right. And then some regular classroom teachers who would be the recipients of the, the assistance from the teacher leaders.
So, their job then will be to, to look at all of the, the implementation standards and pick a model, not unlike we did with PLA schools several years ago. Then to sit down and write the plan and to come up with some ideas. But it will, it's due about the end of December, first of January, somewhere in there. We will keep you posted every step of the way. When it becomes appropriate, might have a board workshop so you can understand. But I think we have, several of the UEN districts have a pretty good start on teacher leadership. When Jason Glass was here a year ago, not a year ago, several months ago, some of you joined us out at Lincoln that night when Linda Fandle was in town. We, I think, were able to convince them that we had a lot of, a very good start in Waterloo. So, we also got to meet and be introduced to Dr. Brad Buck, the new director that's taking Jason Glass's spot. And we were encouraged. He brought some greetings to the, the convention. So, thank you, Bernice.
Thank you. Information from Board members. Shanley?
I had the pleasure of going to both of the sort of kickoff informational meetings about International Back Laureate last week. And it was really nice to see we had about a hundred families at both schools that attended. A lot of really great questions. Jane, you were there, obviously, answering those questions. But I was really encouraged about that and really excited about it. I think it's gonna be a great offering for kids on that end of the spectrum in our district. So, I'm excited about that. And secondly, I just want to remind, we all know that school starts next week, and getting our kids to school and to the bus at the right time and all of that is a lot of work. And for our parents and guardians to try and get kids there on time and all is important because it does make a difference. So, that's it.
Backing on that, when are the bus routes published?
They're not.
They're not going to be this year.
We're gonna be sending individual postcards to each writer.
Okay. All right. So, that's good to know.
That already happened at Cunningham. It went well. And Irving was today. We have not heard that it didn't go well. And so, it, given everything that was going on, it seemed like a more appropriate thing to do than to, to publish them in the newspaper. So, we'll try it this year. Durham's done it at other school districts before, and it's worked very well.
So, what all information does it have on it, then?
Well.
The bus stop and the time and.
Exactly.
And the bus number.
Yep.
How about the bus driver's name?
I'm not sure.
Maybe not.
I'm not sure.
And then that may decrease the ineligible writers because that's only gonna go to the eligible writers.
Exactly. You already picked up on our strategy. That is very good.
And it was published in the, for elementary school families. They got it. In their registration packet, there was a thing that said bus routes will be sent to families. So, families have been notified that they're, that they're coming. So.
Yeah, we're, the Board and all of us are very serious about being as efficient as possible with our busing system this year. We've had arguably too many routes crisscrossing town and not being efficient stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And so, that's one objective. As, as our Board President has stated, another objective is student safety, making sure through pilot and other projects that we are able to know where kids are, they're getting on and off the bus is another big issue, and customer satisfaction, that we get people to school on time. And so, we're really looking forward to, to all of the work that's going on this year.
Thank you. Andrea, did you have anything else?
Nothing really, except school is starting next week, and, and everybody has to be excited about Orange. Especially the kids and the teachers.
Absolutely.
Laura?
Nothing additional.
Okay. And our next Board meeting is August the twenty-sixth. And our president is taking a few days of pleasure off. So, that's why I'm sitting here. And Mr. Kenty was, I'm gonna use one of Dr. Norris's stale jokes, was tied up with a bridge tonight. So. As you know, he works for the city in the engineering department, county, county. So, he's tied up with the bridge. So, that's why he's not here tonight.
It was a train bridge, right?
What kind?
A train.
Okay. All righty. Thank you, Andrea, for adding that on. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, meetings adjourned.